Good morning, everyone. If you'd please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, we beseech your divine guidance in this meeting. Keep us ever mindful of our obligation. Grant us, dear Lord, wisdom, tolerance, and courage that we may well serve our county and fulfill our trust. Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, everyone.
Move to approve the minutes of April 11th.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any public comment regarding any pending resolutions? Okay, if not, we will move on to resolutions. County engineer, and we have Dan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome back to winter. Let's see. I have eight resolutions for your consideration today. First resolution is approving change order number one for the Friendsville Road Bridge Rehab Project, number eight. The second is necessity to close Granger Road between Beach and Terra Way. The third is the necessity to close Hamilton Road between Pearl and Substation. The fourth is the necessity to close Substation Road between Boston and Forest Grove Drive. The fifth is necessity to close Firestorm Road between Wando and Black River Road. The sixth is approving the final plat for the Fairway Landing subdivision in Lafayette Township. The seventh is approving annual assessments on improvements for the same Fairway Landing subdivision in Lafayette Township. And the eighth and final resolution is necessity to close Crow Road between or at the Crow Road and Yoast intersection.
Move to approve the eight resolutions.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeremy Sinkel, our sanitary engineer.
Morning, everyone. Two resolutions for consideration today. The first is authorizing the sanitary engineer to advertise for requests for proposals to repair a one-megawatt generator at the Liverpool wastewater treatment plant. And the second is authorizing the sanitary engineer to advertise for requests for proposals to install an advanced metering infrastructure system.
Move to approve both resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy. Next up, we have Holly Murin. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have Shannon Rhine, transit director.
Surprised both of them, then.
I am.
I'm before Holly, I'm honored. Good morning. I have one resolution for your consideration, approving Medina County Public Transit Contract with Ace Taxi for out-of-county services with Job and Family Services.
I move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
I just had a question. How frequently and to what degree are these kinds of services used by our transit group?
Out-of-county transportation has grown from two buses when I began four years ago to five. So Job and Family is transporting quite a few people. The services are required for their commitment to the community. So, yeah, it's quite a bit. It's grown. And Ace Taxi is a continuation. It'll be a two-year contract with an option for a third. Very much needed. We would not be able to provide that out-of-county transportation without an outside provider.
Great. Thank you.
Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Shannon. Next up, Holly Murin, our human resources director.
Good morning. On our personal changes resolution today, we have a new hire in maintenance, a promotion at Job and Family Services, 12 rate increases, five at Job and Family Services, two in Maintenance, one at County Home, two at Office for Adults, one at Dog Shelter, and one in IT. We have one lateral class change at Job and Family Services, one leave of absence at Job and Family Services, and one return from leave at Job and Family Services. The second resolution is amending the table of organization for the sanitary engineer department. And the third resolution is amending the compensation plan to manual to version 5.01.
Move to approve the three resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Holly.
Next up, we have Chris Jacob, our county administrator.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First resolution this morning amends the annual appropriation resolution by increasing appropriation levels for the adult probation grant programs. Next resolution amends also the 2023 appropriation resolution by transferring appropriations. Included are Board of Developmental Disabilities, the Adult Probation Department again, and Law Library. Next resolution performs a revenue adjustment for Children's Services Fund. This was to properly credit a reimbursement revenue line item. And next resolution approves an agreement amendment with the Ohio Department of Development for an emergency housing shelter planning program. This modifies and extends the complete grant completion date from June 30, 2023, to October 31, 2023. And final resolution this morning allows claims and authorizes issuance for the weekly bills. This week's total, $2,167,146.83.
Move to approve the five resolutions.
Second.
Discussion? Roll? Hambley?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Sweattick?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have department reports. First up is Greg Brown, County Home Superintendent.
I got the big sheet today here. So, starting out with census, we're currently at 41 residents and two adult daycare. Staffing is stable at this point, full capacity for nurses and also for RCA's. Still looking for positions for intermittent LPN and one intermittent resident care aide. Events that have been happening, access to the arts has been once again all over our facility. They did a craft at the end of March. They brought in 180 Easter eggs for the residents to color. We had two casualties. We were at 178 when we were done. And also, on the 14th of April, they brought flower pots and decorated them. It was warm when they did it. We've had some therapy dogs that always have, they come through. We've had Moka, Nitro, and Wilson. The residents love, you know, how many animals come through to visit. Nature Pam came back again. It was Death Valley this time. Aramark did a great job with our Easter meal. Events at OOA on the 14th, they've already been to the Titanic lunch. And then Laura also has a concert lunch on the 21st that we're going to. On the 28th of April, when the weather gets warm again here, we're starting back up to our walks in the park. The first one will be Hubbard Valley. And then tomorrow at noon, I get to go talk to the Sharon Women's Club about the home. Some of the donations, we had four hams from the Kiwanis of Medina Club that they donated. This is something, they have an annual raffor ham sale, and we got four this year. Two of those went to the Easter meal, and then we also used up the last of the ham from last year's 4H auctions. So that was, that was good. Also, the 4H club here in Medina gave us some Easter cards for the, for the residents. And Crop King continues, we had hydroponic lettuce, and we've got cucumbers this time. So that's great for the fresh vegetables. Maintenance, among many things that they've done for us, they get to bring out their lift and clean out the gutters and cut some overhanging limbs back off of the home. So the renovations, anybody wants to see some renovations, come to the home. So when you walk in the front door, the foyer and main hallway have all been refinished. So all you see is glossy yellow pine throughout there. Today, I have a five-star painting coming. They're starting to take down the wallpaper in the main hallway today. So by, by the end of that, it's going to look completely different. Then also, at the end of this week, Greg Dobson Excavations coming to tear out that walk that goes out to 162. We're just going to level it and make it grassy, since we've moved, like I said, the, the mailbox is off to the side now. And, and then as always, we're always looking for volunteers. This is perfect time now with going to the parks. We always go to the rec center. We do bowling. There's a lot of events, both outside of the home and inside of the home, for volunteers. Anybody interested, 330-722-9323 for more information. That's it.
I saw, I saw pictures where they removed the carpeting.
Yes.
And it was beautiful. I know it was on social media, it was, oh, they're just absolutely gorgeous. That's nice.
Trying to track, yeah, let everybody track through as we pulled things out. Yeah, the floors, they put lube on, on top of the floor before they put the carpet on, which saved, saved the wood.
Okay. Good.
Thank you, Greg.
Right, thank you. Thanks.
Next up, we have Eric Kane from Stone Water.
Good morning. Good morning. All righty. Since my last SWCD update, our office has assisted in 15 technical events, including eight drainage site visits, three INEs, two concept plan reviews, one manure pollution investigation, and one site visit regarding riparian buffers. Our office has presented at eight education events, including teaching 41 Buckeye 4th graders about water quality and recycling on March 21st. We hosted a pond clinic out at Letha House Park with 25 residents in attendance on March 24th. The OFSWCD hosted an SWCD tour of the State House, which I attended on March 28th. We had two green cleaning workshops that took place on March 31st and April 5th. Our office held the first invasive workshop on April 8th to go along with our buyback program to remove invasives within the county. We hosted an Earth Day trivia on April 13th, and we would like to thank our host Wreck and Crew Brew Works for making a night a success. On April 15th, our office had a display on rain barrels and stream health at an event at Austin Badger Park. Upcoming events, Earth Day out at Buffalo Creek on April 22nd. Our office has a booth to discuss conservation, as well as a booth to discuss our buyback program specifically. Area 2 Envirothon will be happening on April 26th. The office has several staff members assisting with those efforts. On the 25th, our office, along with volunteers, will be packaging 13,200 seedlings for our passout out at Guy's Orchard on April 28th from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00, and the 29th from 8:00 a.m. to noon. A big thank you to Guy's Orchard, they're always a gracious host for our event. Our office mailed out its spring newsletter, which I brought copies for each of you. Inside, you will find information regarding our buyback program and our spring fish sale. Order forms for the fish sale are due back by May 5th, and the pickup will be May 11th from 8:30 to 10:00 a.m. out at the SWCD office. Our April board meeting will take place tomorrow at our office, 6090 Wedgewood, which is, is open to the public if anyone is interested. And if you have a club, group, or municipality that is looking for a speaker, please reach out to our office for all things conservation-based. Any questions?
Two questions. When did you say the, when, when are you packing the seedlings? What's the date for that?
That will be the-
Maybe that's on your newsletter here.
That will be the 25th.
25th.
The Tuesday, out at Guy's Orchard, if you wanted to volunteer, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'm going to check that out.
I have a random question. What do these pear trees do that are invasive?
So they are the white ones that you see out flowering mostly now. They smell terrible, but they also provide no support for our insects, the young insects that we need. They have a little bit of food available for our mature insects, but it's a food desert, basically. If you go, there's a scan code there, a QR code. You can go to our website, find out some more information on why they're not good here and what we, why we would like to replace them.
I'm just asking, because they're all over my neighborhood.
Yeah, yep, they sure are. It's, one of the things they do is invasive, is they come in and take over and kill the natives that we need by outcompeting them and then provide no food for insects and pollinators.
It's a good way to make people aware of them, because they are all flowering.
They see them now, and the, the reason they were popular at one point is because they were thought to not reproduce, but they do. They cross-pollinated and started getting out there, and now they're everywhere. And if, they have a terrible smell, other than looking not so bad, they have no benefits for us here.
Really?
Wow. Okay.
My second question was about the, the apiary. I think you were waiting on some donations of equipment, and then is, is everything up and running as far as that's concerned?
Yes. So Michael started last month. He's all set with our office, and he received from Medina County Bee Association a donation for his equipment that he'll be using moving forward.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Richard Nelson, our chief building official.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
I'm sorry you got our copy of the report late. I went and took Friday off, sorry. So this is going to be a recurring theme for my reports. Last year's high numbers make this year's reports look glum. But, yeah, the overall value of construction out there is down 34% from this time last year. And, you know, that's quite a change. But, you know, we, we still have plenty to do. It's not really bad. New home starts, you know, still pretty good at 87 for the year, pretty, pretty much average. The average cost of new homes year-to-date is $388,000, which is, you know, also right up there. Last year's average ended up at 371. 21's average was 454, and 20's average was, average ended up at 390. It's amazing how those can be all over the place, even though it's a whole year average. So moving on to the second page, again, our monthly receipts are down from, from last year, down 21%. Third page, our year-to-date receipts, also down just a little, 8%, you know, averaging out. Again, so it's, it's not all that, it's not all bad. Fourth page is new permits by townships and villages. Seems like Seville Village is, is winning, because they've got a new home allotment down near Ryan Homes. So they're putting up quite a few homes. Fifth page is graphs of the same information showing Seville Village up there pretty good. Lafayette's up pretty good, too. Sixth page, commercial permits issued by townships and villages. And the last page is the list of commercial permits issued, quite a few, 14 of them, but still down from a year ago. So another, other stuff, we, we look forward to filling an open position. You know, we kind of recreated the plans and process coordinator, so we're happy to be filling that again. Our residential review times are still good at three to four days. Commercials down to 15 to 18 days. And these are, these are kind of maximum days. They're, it's not an average. Those are, those are kind of the, the, the maximum number of days before we get back and give them a response. Other than that, I recently shared the results of our building department grading survey that was done, that gets done every five years. Didn't look that good because of the fact that our code cycle is a five-year cycle, and we're near the end of that five-year cycle, so they downgrade our, downgrade our, our rating because of that, because our code's five years old, which is almost comical, because it's, it's a statewide thing. So everybody's in the same boat, but yet they do, they, they do that. They, they did it five years ago, because the same thing occurred. And then they'll, they'll correct that when our code gets replaced, we think, within a year. And then, and then they'll fix our grade back up to a, you know, something pretty decent.
I'm sure the developers and builders appreciate your response times, though.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's been good. That's all I have.
I don't, I'm not so glum about the average construction cost actually being lower than they were last year. The number of units hasn't really decreased, so that I consider it to be still a good sign.
Yeah.
And I, 388,000 is now what I call affordable housing, but certainly it is, is a lot better than the 416,000.
Yes.
So I think, glad to see that, that, that was, that was a blip.
Yeah, it was a blip. And that, and that, again, can be affected by just having several mansions built-
Right.
-in a given year, which I think is what happened that year. There were several very large homes.
Well, you have a bump up in the, in the, the small, well, I'll say the lower-cost units, like going on in Seville. That development is, yeah.
Yeah.
So that helps bring, bring overall-
Correct.
-the average down. So I think, yeah. Although still, it's a lot of business activity. I'm thankful the department is able to handle it.
Very good.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Bethany Dutton from Economic Development.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So 2023 continues to be busy for Medina County's economic development activities. I would say it's a more normal kind of healthy. We do have a similar number of projects coming in the door, but what's different is the capital investment per project. This year, we've seen $40 million of new capital investment invested through the first quarter, which, yes, is considerably lower than last year this time, which was well over 200 million, but last year was just crazy. Team Neo, our regional counterparts, they are reporting at the regional level, it's an 18-county region in northeast Ohio. They're seeing similar trends. Lots of volume of companies look interested in, in growing and doing projects, but with more conservative investment plans, I think, just, you know, trying to be careful about what might be coming in the economy. But I am encouraged that we still have a good number of projects in the pipeline for 2023, including a number of the CRE projects that we approved already this year, and some have not been finalized or announced yet. So I'm confident by the time we get to the end of the year, we'll still, we'll see, we will be in a very healthy position for the county. Right now, we are seeing interest in, in growing throughout the entire county. I'm particularly pleased that there are a number of companies interested in buying land at Innovation Park in Lafayette Township. So that's been a bit of a long time developing, so. In this first quarter, we've met with 68 companies to understand their business needs and discuss opportunities for growth. That includes conversations with dozens of executives during the process of conducting our annual, or annual reviews for the community reinvestment area tax abatement agreements in early March. So just a quick, a few tidbits from them. Some companies are seeing a slowdown, but they're determined to hold on to their workers. I think they learned during the Great Recession that when you get rid of good people, they don't always come back. So they are trying to hold on to their, their people. Other companies are in the middle of planning new investments, because their business is booming and they just need new space. One manufacturer's investment is in new capital equipment lines that, you know, is 10 million or more. Most companies reported that they had great years in 2022 with significant revenue increases. While there is some concern about recession, most of them seem to be in great shape to weather the storm. Companies are continuing to hire, perhaps at a bit of a slower pace, which is reflected in the latest unemployment rates. Medina County's unemployment rate for February of, of this year was at 4.6%. It has been much lower than that since last June, although it's the same rate as it was last June. But that 4.6% in 2023 is still lower than the prior February in 2022, when it was at 5.3%. So I think that's still an indication of economic health. I think that, you know, as we look at the past six to eight months, the fact that the rate is creeping up a bit indicates that more people are putting themselves on the job market, perhaps a few from layoffs, although I don't get the sense that there's too many of that, that going on in Medina County. More likely, it's because they're just putting themselves back into the job market after not seeking a job for a while. Few other updates on our activities at Medina County Economic Development. In our workforce area, our pre-apprenticeship program has enrolled 125 students this past school year. Of those students, 75 have already met all the requirements for graduation, and we have, we had 20 students signed up for an emergency day, which is taking place today. Now, they could have been students who like moved into the district and just needed to catch up on the requirements. Could have been students who were just a little bit behind, but we're happy to catch them up. This program will enable those students to complete the program and obtain all the necessary credits for graduation. And we are planning to seek funding to continue that program for next school year. I think, you know, having another, even 75 to 100 graduates now in the labor pool for our companies to tap into is, is pretty important to our, our particular board and our business community. Our career coach program, Mitchell Bemke, has met with 61 students this past year. It's a pilot program. He has done one-on-one career coaching sessions. He also presented his services to over 2,500 students in assemblies. I think he was making cold calls during cafeteria periods. He's done group presentations and classes, and he's also been working the career fairs since he started last summer. He is looking ahead to the end of the school year, and during the summer, he goes out and he meets with businesses so that he can understand their job needs and then take that information back to the students and help them with their career choices. In the meantime, he is coordinating the applications for the County Forward Fund Work Scholarship Program. We're offering $1,000 scholarships for Medina County graduates who are heading straight to work. For that matter, I'm not even sure graduation is a requirement. If you're going to work after high school, then we encourage you to apply for the scholarship. So if you know of any businesses, or if anyone else knows of any businesses who are employing a high school senior that will be working for them full-time upon graduation, please encourage them to apply. We did move the deadline forward, which is now May 1st, and we do have an online application form available at countyforwardfund.org. This spring, we also created a unique program to help local businesses build their workforce pipeline by attracting recent high school graduates to their companies. This was our first Pitch Day program organized with local school districts to allow local companies a direct pipeline, a direct forum, to pitch their job openings to students that are seeking a career path. We had support from the Educational Service Center of Medina County and the Pedestal Group, and we created a Pitch Day program book for high school seniors. It includes a link to QR codes. These are Medina County Economic Development member companies who are hiring, and this is on their website. So these are going to all the students, even for companies that weren't able to pitch in person. Then we still have an opportunity for the students to interact with them online. So this year, we're working with Buckeye, Wadsworth, and Brunswick School Districts, so hopefully it leads to some successful candidates for our companies. A couple of quick Port Authority updates. Our Brownfields Grants Program, I had reported earlier that working through the Port Authority last year, we secured over $938,000 in Brownfields Grants Programs. The state did extend the deadline for those projects to be completed. The original deadline was this June, which was ridiculous considering they're still working out their reporting system. So they allowed us to extend that to next June, June of 2024. So some of those projects are already complete, and we just have to get the reimbursements in, and the rest are, seem to be underway. Looking ahead to this fall, October 20th of 2023 marks the 20-year anniversary of the creation of the Port Authority by the Medina County Commissioners. So that's got my mind thinking about how we can celebrate, and especially put together some economic impact data on the work of the Port Authority, because it has been significant over these past two decades. One other quick reminder, again, looking ahead to the fall, we're now accepting nominations for the 2023 Medina County Business Awards Program will take place in October in Westfield Center. The award categories are business growth, capital investment, community advocate, and entrepreneur of the year. So if anyone has, someone that they think could fit in that category, we have an online nomination form at medinacounty.org. That's my report.
Any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned that Pitch Day, the high school Pitch Day. There's a virtual component and an onsite component?
Correct.
How many of the participants participated onsite?
For the first round, we were at Buckeye last week. I believe there were eight or nine companies onsite.
So for the first launch, that probably was pretty positive.
Exactly. And then we had over 100 companies in the book.
That's great.
I've just made 20 years. I remember sitting up in a balcony room with John Stricker and working through the text with all the business leaders in city of Brunswick, which had the ability to create their own a port authority at that time, and they agreed to combine with the, the county efforts. So that, yeah, boy, came by quick, but you've achieved a lot. I'm glad we'll be able to celebrate that in October.
Absolutely. Although the Port Authority can't buy food, according to the auditor's office, so.
Okay.
Might have, might have to sponsor that.
Okay, we might, we might have to fight, yeah, let's buy some sponsors.
All right. Thank you. Bethany.
All right, thanks.
Okay, we do have a liquor permit filing for the record. The Commissioners received notice of a new liquor permit request from G5 Investments from G5 Investments LLC located at 1375 Ridge Road, Hinckley Township, Hinckley, Ohio. This is for a D5 permit class. So this is just information that we put in the record. So next up, we have public comment. Does anybody have any public comment? Okay, we are going to move on to our discussion session then. And the first discussion session item is, um, the Law Library. And I'm going to have Commissioner Harrison take over the discussion on this.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we do have a couple of folks in the room here on behalf of the Law Library, so thank you. Got our, uh, Law Librarian and our, oh, and, and I didn't see Gina. I'm sorry, Gina. We got our, um, Executive Secretary and then also, um, a couple members of the Law Library Association and, and at least one from the Resources Board. So, um, the room is well attended of people who, who have interest in this issue. Um, I obviously have a personal interest in it too, as an, an, a practicing attorney who, uh, was a former member of the Resources Board. Um, but we wanted to have a discussion today because we did receive some, um, inquiry from the Law Library Association regarding where things stand with that. And we have kind of an ongoing discussion, which we're going to discuss in a minute, related to the lease agreement, uh, with the city, uh, for the 1969 portion of the courthouse. Um, but in connection with that, the, I think there's been some perspec- perception that maybe that, that puts, you know, some questions around where the, the Law Library is ultimately going to be, be situated. So, um, just for purposes of kind of having this discussion on the record, um, in my understanding and kind of the preliminary discussions we've had related to the, to the lease, um, with the city of Medina, is that the space that the city would be leasing would specifically exclude the space that the Law Library currently operates, or occupies in the 1969 courthouse. So I guess it kind of is a preliminary matter.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
And, and since the lease is still being written, we can spell that out specifically.
Right. And that is actually one of the points that I'm, I've got on my notes for, for, I think that's our next discussion item, um, is to, is to specify that. Um, I know there was some work that went in, obviously it predates me on, on the Board of Commissioners, but with some water damage that was down there. I think the space, and if I'm speaking out of turn, I don't want to, you know, you can correct if I'm wrong, but the space, as it's currently constructed, fits the needs of the Law Library and, and the practitioners down there, um, very well. And, and, um, the, the investment that's gone into there, I think everybody would like to see that kind of remain intact. And I don't think there's any plans, or at least we don't have any plans to, to make any changes to that.
Yeah, no, when the flood happened, we almost instantly started working on the remodel. And I have yet to hear any complaints about the remodel or, or the space since it's been redone.
Yep. And, and so that's, I think that's the, um, one of the components of the discussion is, is being proactive and, and, and bringing kind of the interested parties into the, into the conversation when we have these. So I think that's kind of been an unstated intention, uh, as, as we've begun to negotiate the lease. And I thought for purposes of today's discussion, it made sense to make that a more public declaration that that's, that that's kind of the direction that we're headed in, and where our minds are at. And, and I'm not trying to couch anything. We don't have a, a signed lease, but there's been no, no Nate, none of the discussions that have happened with the city, uh, have led me to believe that they have any other intentions of that. I obviously can't, we, none of us can speak for the city, but, um, there's no reason to believe that, um, you know, their understanding of the lease is that it's going to keep the Law Library space intact as well. So, um, that, I think that's all a positive. I think the other issue, um, you know, that, that goes a little bit beyond kind of the nature of the, of the lease agreement that we have with the Law Library, but more, uh, along the lines of what's historically been the case is related to 24-hour access. And, um, in the old courthouse, before the new construction began, um, Law Library, um, members had access to the Law Library space after hours. And, um, I've done some investigation of that issue, and I know the Law Library, uh, the Resources Board at least, had had some preliminary investigation of that as well. It, it isn't, I think, typical for 24-hour access to be the norm in law libraries that are located in courthouses. Um, and it, it is, again, I can speak as a practitioner and somebody who has been to the Law Library on a weekend because you had a deadline or you had something that you had to meet. Um, it, it, it's, it's something that you, that you'd like to provide if you're able to provide, but kind of the commitment that has gone into, uh, modernizing security at the new courthouse, um, in accordance with the Supreme Court guidelines and also the, the, I won't say demands comes across wrong, but the priorities, I guess, of the judges, um, has made that, uh, an impossibility, a virtual impossibility, because there was some investigation done on cost, uh, related to the type of security we'd have to have to be compliant with all those indicators. And I don't know those numbers. I don't, do either of you know the exact number or the approximate number?
I don't know the exact number, but, you know, having, um, a deputy sheriff or two onsite 24/7. It's not just one person with, you know, weekends and vacations and three shifts. It's a significant cost.
Yeah.
Uh, for the 21st century security requirements and the way the new building is set up with security. Um, it would be a significant cost to keep it open 24/7.
And that's, and, and I, I've had some conversations, I know, with practitioners who've said, well, really, you know, you don't, you don't have to have that, that 24/7, um, security because we're talking about members of the bar and members of the Law Library. But if you, if you look at the, um, at least the recommendations that are made by the Supreme Court, my reading of that is if there's a person going in or out of the building, they're, they're expected to go through, you know, the security protocols. Um, and, and, you know, that's one of those things where we kind of have to balance our, um, the, the history of what we've had in terms of access with, you know, having a, a, a brand-new facility that we're trying to bring up to compliance. There were, I think it's been well documented, there were a lot of compliance and security issues. Not issues that, that actually happened, but things that we just couldn't maintain just based on the space limitations of the, of the old facility. Um, and so I think as it relates to that 24/7 access for, for, to, to meet the priority and the expectation of the Law Library staying in that same location, um, it, we haven't, we haven't devised, there's really no, uh, workable solution to, to do both.
I, I get, question, it, I know that, um, it's not required by law that the Law Library has to be within a courthouse, correct?
That is, that is correct.
And in fact, the most counties do not have a Law Library within their courthouses.
I don't know about, I, I think.
Isn't that true?
Perhaps mo- I don't know, I don't know if it's at 50/50. I don't know if it's 80/20. Um, I mean, if I'm thinking about the lot, the, the ones around here, in Akron, Summit County, it is in the, it's in the courthouse.
In the courthouse?
And they have, I think, exceptionally limited hours there. Um, but, but it is in the courthouse. Wayne County's, I think, is in the courthouse? If I'm, yeah, if I'm, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so in our contiguous counties, it's the norm.
Okay.
I don't, I've not done a 88-county survey to know exactly, but, but where it is in the courthouse, uh, we were one of the few, I don't want to say the only, but one of, one of the only certainly that, that had the 24/7 access.
Got it.
Within that. And so that, that, it, but we still do, there is still kind of a practical limitation for the members of the bar when they, when they have a deadline, um, a court-imposed deadline. You know, if you're, if you're, if you have a trial and the, the judge wants an issue briefed and you adjourn for the day at, at 4:30, that does create an issue. And I, and I do think, um, you know, we obviously can't bind the hands of our, of our judges, but the judges do need to be aware of that, that most practitioners in the, in, in Medina County don't, don't maintain the, um, electronic research resources that are in the Law Library. And they rely, uh, many of them rely exclusively on the Law Library for those services.
But you're also saying the counties don't offer 24.
Right, right, right. But, but so my point though is too, that there's got to be some kind of balancing in terms of the expectations of the courts, if there, if there's going to be, you know, if that limitation's going to be there, so.
To Steve's point, um, would there be some considerations for other facilities that we have?
We have the 72.
Right, that could have easier 24-hour access.
Yeah, because it's separate.
Well, and that's where I don't.
Adjacent to, or.
Yeah. And I don't want to speak, obviously, for the, the Law Library, but I, I, my understanding has been, at, at least of the most recent communications that we've received too. The priority is staying in the courthouse and in the space that's there because that is suitable space. Um, but certainly if, if 24/7 access were to trump that, yeah, I think there's, I mean, oops. We can talk to Chris about if, if there were other options for that, but, um.
Well, speaking for my opinion, 24 access has to be off the record because of the security and the cost issues, having 24/7, um, sheriff deputies there for the screening and for security, um, that, that is a substantial cost.
But you're, but if it were offsite, I mean, if it were at another location.
Offsite, then it doesn't matter.
Right, right.
Yeah, a key fob kind of situation.
Because they're only accessing the Law Library.
Yeah.
Not a whole criminal justice center.
And that, and the, and, and the other problem too is it is a, it's in a fairly, with the new configuration, internal section of.
That's right.
The facility, which, which kind of further ties the hands from a security standpoint. So, um, so I guess in response to the, the letter that came in, that was the conversation that I wanted to make sure we had on the record was kind of what the maybe competing interests are. And I, and I don't want to measure for the Law Library Board or the Association how those things are weighed, but, um, we, we've, I think, been consistent, and it is a concern of mine, has been a concern of mine because I, I came into this job having been on the Resources Board. Um, I do, I do think it's important to keep that space, but if the, if the board met and decided it was more important to have 24/7 access, we're certainly not closing the door to that. It's just the opportunity to have that 24-hour access at that current location.
Is, is.
Is not a non-starter.
It's a non-starter.
Yeah.
What do you agree?
Oh, yeah, I, that, yeah, we can't afford, uh, that it was not, yeah, intended for budgetary purposes, and we're not required to.
Yeah.
Correct?
Question. Um, may I address the Commissioners?
Sure.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I, yeah, be fine. We, so we have, we, we had a discussion session, but I was actually going to propose this and I forgot. That maybe if you could, you'd come up for your public comment, because we were going to have this discussion before, after public comment. So I'm totally fine with her coming up, yeah, public comment, definitely.
Do you want me at the.
Sure.
It'd be better.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
And I also have a handout for the Commissioners, um, yeah, I, um, handed to the Commissioners.
Sure. We're not as formal as the court here.
Well, you're more important than the court.
And the other thing, Aaron, you know that what happens is when you get those deadlines, it's usually like a court in another county or the federal court. And you've got to get to the Law Library and do the research that night and be back in court the next morning. And so, you know, there's no changing the judge's mind about that. And maybe we can work together to find a way to make it happen. I mean, I don't know what the guidelines are, but if people work together, then maybe we can find a way to make some things happen.
And, and again, we're not saying that 24 access is a non-starter in maybe another location.
Well, we don't know that it's a non-starter there because we don't know what guidelines we're up against and what work's been done. So again, um, you know, people, it's easy to say no, but I always like to look at, well, what are the guidelines we actually have to meet and, and see if we can do it? And, uh, you know, the answer ultimately is we can't find a way to make it work for both of us, then we look at other things. But we should look at, we haven't done that yet, at least in the context of the Law Library.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I, my, my sense of it having, because I had the luxury, I guess, of coming from the outside and asking some of those questions, is that there was a fairly, you know, there, there was some analysis done on that. And, and to, to do both, to secure the courthouse in the way that it's expected to be secured to meet, meet the, the restrictions, um, while providing 24-hour access to that, to that kind of pocket of the 69 building would be, would be cost prohibitive.
We can look at the work that's been done, maybe we can find a way around.
Again, I'm on the record saying that the Law Library is welcome to stay there in that site, but not with 24-hour access. So I don't know if you guys.
Right, I agree.
Yes, so.
Well, can we see the work? Why?
Um, the.
Yeah, can we see, you know, what the basis was? You know, oftentimes, when you've got a dispute or something else, when you look at what the parameters are, both.
Chris is going to come up and add.
Oh, okay, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Well, I guess, just. Quick comment. Um, we did do some research and cost analysis of trying to accommodate the 24/7 access. We'll, I'll go back and, and pull the documents and see what we can put together to present. But I, you know, I think it'll show that it's probably not a workable situation for this board.
Okay, yeah, if you get the requirements.
We'll do.
The requirements are there and what we're considering.
The requirements are as described here, I believe, that it's based on the need to secure the facility and not have access after hours, um, and open up the possibility of folks moving throughout the, the entire complex. It seems that, uh, there's an inability on our part to be able to do that. But we did look into it, um, in order to try to meet this, uh, this need. Um, and I'll go back and pull some documents.
All right.
See what we can put together.
Metal gates and things like that too, and the Law Library Association has some funds as well.
Right.
And, you know, we can, we can look at that and, uh, hey, maybe we can't do it, maybe we can, but it's always worth a discussion.
Sure. And, but to the credit of this board, they did in fact try to research that and I think came back with a conclusion that based on budgetary constraints, it wasn't possible to do that.
Well, I'm not criticizing anybody, it's just that the Law Library Association was not part of that discussion.
Perhaps.
Well, yeah.
Well, I wasn't here at the time, but perhaps.
And that's, that's the reason.
And I would say too, I, I, that, I think that point is, is, is well taken. I think we look at this discussion as a step toward, you know, where things should be headed in the future. So we can talk collaboration and working together. All, we're all in for that, but, but we also have, at the end of the day, the obligation to weigh the cost benefit. And, and, and the, the benefit of, the benefit of 24/7 access to me, to you, to the other legal practitioners in town is, is different, uh, than it is to really any other resident in the county. And it's really hard to justify that, you know, finite benefit, uh, against the very real costs that, that would be incurred by the county, even with the assistance of the Law, of the Law Library. But, but, but your point's well made in terms of having the discussion and having it be something that, that can be, uh, you know, where, where we are, where the census, we're working together.
Yeah, I, I understand. We wouldn't want to have, uh, you know, uh, sheriff's deputies or anything like that. That's certainly not, but there may be other alternatives.
But that's also why I was, I was quick when we did receive the letter, which I'm sure Ms. Walker's going to speak about here, but that we say, hey, let's, let's bring everybody in that is interested in it because I, I do think it's an important issue and it's one we don't want to overlook, you know, our partners in the, uh, you know, the, the legal community when we're making these decisions.
Well, I commend you for that.
Well, thank you. That's why I brought it up, no.
Well, um, for the record, I'm Pat Walker and I'm president of the Law Library Association, as most people know. And I do commend the Commissioners for, um, having a discussion today, but it would have been better if we would have been involved. Um, earlier in 2019, we asked to be involved and unfortunately, we haven't been involved. Um, the Law Library is an economic driver for the entire legal structure in Medina County. It provides legal resources for not only the Medina County judges, the municipal judges, the, um, attorneys who provide indigent defense, um, which we no longer have, the public defenders. So we have the private attorneys who are providing the indigent defense, the prosecutor's office, and the public. And it is an important entity that allows legal information to be spread through the entire community. For instance, um, some people have said, well, you have computer research, so you can do it in your offices. That may or may not be available, as Commissioner Harrison has said. An awful lot of the legal community re, um, relies on the Law Library's, um, West Law access. But even if you're talking about computer legal resources, it doesn't complete what you need. The Law Library has a number of specific topic resources, materials, books, that are not available to, um, people online that are used by the community. We have a relationship with the District Library where their resources, um, their reference librarians contact the Law Library to get information. It is a public service. It is not just, oh, this is for the lawyers. This is a public service. And we do have members of the public who come in, who do legal research. Um, it's an important entity. It's also, as I said, an economic driver because it does help the entire community. When you look at this community and the number of people that are employed in the legal sector, there are quite a number, particularly around the square. Um, dealing with the issue of 24/7 access. Um, recently, um, I had a situation. I don't do estate planning and wills. We do intellectual property, patents, trademarks, copyrights, that sort of thing. that sort of thing. But I had a friend who, um, unfortunately was dying and we kept trying to get her to an estate lawyer. Unfortunately, that didn't happen and I got a phone call that it pretty much looked like it was kind of the end. And so I ended up at 10 o'clock at night in the law library because I had no clue how to write a life estate clause in a will. So I had to be there for that. Fortunately, it happened before the courthouse project. So there's a number of reasons why after hours is necessary. And when you're looking at it, the courthouse is open from roughly 8:00 AM to 4:30. There's an awful lot of business that's done after 4:30. One of the aspects that I've been hearing about is that the city's plans, at least the city's plans as of last year, last time we were aware of them, had a staff entrance that was right close to the law library. And we felt that this could possibly provide the 24/7 access because you can have secured doors. It appeared under the plans that there was a specific section of the, what was called the basement, now maybe called the first floor of the 1969 courthouse, that was pretty much cordoned off for that entrance and you could have, you know, actually that part of the basement be segregated. And we think that might be one of the ways to have a solution to the 24/7. We understand you want security. You want to follow the Supreme Court guidelines, but I think that it can be. And Ralph Jock is correct that the association does have some funds and we're not talking about county funds. These are separate funds. They're not the legal resources funds. So I think that it would be great if we could have some type of discussion on how the security can be done and the 24/7 access be provided. The law library has been around for 125 years and for approximately 50 years of that, there's been the 24/7 access. So this isn't something that, you know, just happened and, you know, it's not been ingrained in the community. This is important. And I think that, um, both the legal resources board and the association would be very willing to look at the issue of being off-site, but still relatively close to the courthouse if the 24/7 access was, um, provided. And we, I do want to commend the commissioners. We did appreciate the fact that very fast after the flood, um, the law library was renovated and we really appreciate that. It helped us out greatly. The current configuration is much better than the old one. But I think that economically and efficiently, I think we can look at the 24/7. We are asking today that we be part of the discussion and that we look at it together and we understand that there are concerns of the commissioners and we also have such concerns. So that is the reason why I asked to present today. And I do want to point out that we do have our law librarian, Ian Haberman, here is today, Gina Hodgkiss, our executive secretary. We have Bill Thorne, a longtime member, and also Rob Skidmore, who is on the legal resources board. And we appreciate them coming and supporting the law library. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I do. So most of your points do revolve around the 24/7 access. So you are open to discussions if we did have another location near the square?
Yes.
Where we could, you're open to discussions of moving?
Yes.
Okay.
What was the last time of, no, when the court, when, obviously it was an active courthouse before the new one. And when they started to upgrade security, when did 24/7 stop?
Oh, 24/7 only stopped when the courthouse project started. So when they blocked off...
So prior to that, when we had security, you, you were still able to get in at 24/7?
Yes.
Under, even though we had people going through the detectors and the judge had closed?
Yes. Even though the judges had had a security committee that met and that was when they put in the, um, security and the magnetometers and all that?
Right.
That was looked at and they did not feel it was a problem. One reason is that we've always had a key system. So the only way anybody gets in is with a key fob.
Right.
So the key fobs are controlled by the law library and, um, so they know exactly who gets in. And it's only the lawyers who get the key fob. Lawyers have to go through a criminal background check before they manage to take the bar.
Right.
So, um, so for instance, if you end up having a staff entrance where staff can get in off-hours, staff does not have to go through a criminal background check.
Right.
Whereas the lawyers do. And then I can tell you that if any lawyer actually does something that you wouldn't want to happen in the courthouse, they're going to lose their license. I'm bar counsel of the Medina County Certified Grievance Committee and that would be, you know, seriously a problem and they'd probably lose their livelihood, so.
So you mentioned in your speech that there's public that comes to use the law library as library. Did the public who are non-attorneys have 24-hour access also?
No.
They were only there during the day?
Yes.
Okay.
And right now there, we have public coming to the law library. They are only there as long as the security's at the front door of the courthouse. So, and it has always been that way.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Very helpful. Thank you for coming. Do, should, we probably, you're, you're the chair.
Well, did you have anyone else?
I was going to say, in the interest of if there's anybody else who has anything to add that would like to speak, because it is kind of our, our comment section, I know we kind of rearrange that.
Anybody else?
Then if not, then yeah, I think that's, I mean, you know, I, I guess my takeaway from that would be to wait and hear maybe some further feedback from the association and the resources board related to kind of the balance of those two things.
Right. And we really won't be, you know, should, um, should we be moving forward with 69 and the city, we won't be involved in their architectural, architectural plans.
Right.
You know, um, that will be for them to handle and should a lease be worked out?
And just to be, to be clear, I think I said this at the beginning, but maybe it wasn't clear, the space that's, that is currently the law library space will be excluded from the lease that the city signed. So they will be leasing the space in 69 courthouse, basically that excludes the law library space, which will continue to, so our, the lease between the law library and the county will continue in effect.
Right. So would you like to handle investigating other options that we have available near the square?
Yeah, I think doing that in connection with getting some of those additional details so everybody's on the same page, I think that's productive.
I'd like to make a comment or at least give you an observation. Every draft of the lease with the city we've seen gives the county control of what they can do and what they can't do. And so the county must pretty much approve everything that they put in. And so you do have control over what they put in and what interests and egress they have.
We have approval because it's, it's our property.
Exactly.
However, we're not going to dictate terms to them in terms of their design. If their design said, we're going to put a door here and we approve it, that's one thing. If they, if, if, if we were to come down and say, you have to put a door here, you know, those are two different things.
Right. But there's going to be a, a staff entrance for the municipal court as well, other than the public entrance. And so, again, it's all about working together.
Right.
Working together with, you know, the requirement that the county has to provide approval, you probably work something out.
Yeah.
So, again, I make that point.
Yeah, no, I think we're, I think we're all committed to doing that and I think that's, I think it's, I, I hope you see it as I see it, which was a, a big step forward in that ongoing discussion, so. Oh, Mr. Haberman?
Might I just add, uh, everything that's been said does not need to be repeated by me. What Aaron said, what Pat said are some of the points that I would make. So there's no point repeating it. Let me just say we've had a wonderful working relationship with the county. Uh, and when issues came up, we were able to sit down and resolve them. So in my capacity as law librarian, I would pledge to continue to do that and would be happy to work with you folks on any issues relating to the law library, 24/7, uh, what other issues there may be, uh, let me know and, uh, love to work with you on it.
Thank you so much.
Great, very good.
Thanks, Ian.
Anything else on this topic?
Uh, I don't think so.
So you're going to handle it from here, investigating's possibilities?
Sure. Yep.
Okay. So next up, we have the 69 courthouse lease and to lead that discussion, we're going to bring Mr. Jacobs out.
Just a, um, update on where we're at, I think, with the lease negotiations. Approximately week, we can have go, I met with Assistant Prosecutor Lyons to discuss the latest version that he and I both had access to. As you know, the, uh, previous, uh, staff members from both prosecutor's office and the commissioner's office working on that, both retired March 31st. So subsequently, um, we, Mr. Lyons and I met to talk about key issues within the current draft of, of the lease agreement. And I'll just briefly describe what that discussion entailed and how I think in some cases, we need to proceed from here. The current draft that I've provided you modifies the terms of the lease to include a 33-year initial term and two additional optional terms of 10 years each and a subsequent renewal option in 10-year increments, subject to the option of either party not to renew the lease.
So explain that a little better for...
Sure.
33 years?
Yes.
Then two 10-year options on the city side only?
Um, depends on the wording of the final version, but yes.
So after those two 10-year...
And assuming that those two 10-year optional renewal periods have been exercised.
Got it.
Um, there is the ability to provide for automatic 10-year renewals, um, subject to the option of either party not wishing to renew the lease.
Okay.
Okay. Which the non-renewals on a 12-month notice, like a, a year ahead of time, you could opt out of a 10-year...
Right. There's additional language about the, the requirements on the note.
Right.
So potentially, you know, one of the things we talked about was not, you know, handcuffing to use, oh, the future leaders?
Correct.
This is basically 53 years and then discussions will be had, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to...
Well, discussions will still be had at, at the renewal option, depending on the party that's having the discussion, right?
Sure.
So.
Essentially, if the city desires it, they go for 53 years.
Mm-hmm.
Use again, and then of course, after that, the county commissioners without the ability to say, okay, now we want to use it for county purposes.
Provide notification that it wishes to...
Provide, with a, with a...
To not renew after the 53.
Okay. Very clear. It's a good, it's a good deal.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there, you know, and please take a look at that language that's currently included and there may be better ways to, to phrase some of it. And I'm sure the prosecutor's office will be willing to, to entertain suggestions on that. Again, this is a work in progress. The other issue that I think was a major sticking point for my predecessor was the fact that there was reference to Exhibits A, B, C, D in the city's version of the lease that was presented. But fairly, it's really the county's responsibility to produce the areas that we've described as the leased space, which would include the exclusive use space, the commoner shared use space, um, and, um, those areas of the parking facility that have been constructed as part of this new project and associated responsibilities for maintaining that. I've reached out to the county's architect on the project to, um, better, um, understand the calculation methods that we could utilize to assign those various areas. And just as a follow-up to the earlier discussion, there is a designated area that retains use by the law library and that was 2,144 square feet, um, which is, uh, I do have a copy of a drawing that I received this morning, actually, um, in response to my request. That does include the separation of the law library space from the potential city lease space.
So I know we don't have the exhibits, but the 28, or, or, but we're working on that.
Right.
The 28,193 square feet referenced in the areas of exclusive use does, or at least is, our intent is that would, that would not include that law library space, which would continue to be...
That specifically excludes the 2144 square feet.
Great, great, okay.
You're excluded.
Thank you.
There's also a couple other comments regarding my discussion with Mr. Lyons. I think there's also further discussion that's necessary with our county facilities manager regarding responsibility of maintaining the systems of the buildings. There are certain systems with that complex that are shared and the way the current lease is worded, it assigns specific responsibility based on the building, when in fact, there are systems that, um, we can't necessarily assign to someone else because it affects all users of the entire complex. So we need to work through some of that. And I, I fear we may get bogged down with, with that, but perhaps we can figure way, figure out a way to allow the lease to provide for, um, further discussion at some point once their systems are planned and engineered and we'll know more about how the integration of their systems will work with ours. So, um, I would just caution you that we want to be careful in that for, for future purposes.
Sorry.
And future cost exposure.
Would that include, well, it wouldn't include IT because IT's not going to be shared, right? They're going to have their own...
Correct. Yeah, I'm talking about plumbing.
Yeah.
HVAC, electrical, rooftop, um, uh, components. Um, yeah, there, there are a lot of, uh, I think, details that we need to work through there.
They're, they're, the expectation from an IT standpoint is they're going to have their own, um, in the, in that exclusive space, they're going to maintain their, they're not going to share closets and those kinds of things.
Gosh, I hope that's the case, yeah.
Okay.
I, I did have a question regarding, um, 2.2, 2.3, where we specifically put the $70,000 for security costs in and it is stated 20%. Do you think that wording is clear enough to understand that costs will go up with CPI and stuff like that?
No, and that's one of my points I wanted to talk about today. There needs to be a rethinking and recalculation perhaps of that courthouse security cost sharing, given the fact that what we know today isn't necessarily what happens 20 years from now. So we need to be able to modify, um, that aspect of this lease or how we charge back.
Or simply maybe just go to, instead of putting the 70,000 number there, a straight 20%?
I don't, um, I don't necessarily agree with that $70,000 number either.
Okay.
So, um, that's some of the work that I, I need yet to do.
Okay.
The other thing is if we have, the, the calculation you do to check the number or verify the number, if there's a way to just incorporate that in there, then we know it's going to stay current. You know, if that calculation's performed every year, over year, over year.
Sure.
That's probably the better way to get there because, yeah, I always get nervous when we put a number in in today's dollars.
Right.
For a lease that's intended to last more than half a century.
Right.
And in, um, 2.2.1, if, at least I don't see it clearly stating that after the 33 years, we go up by some sort of CPI calculation?
There, there is some wording in the lease agreement, the current draft.
It starts at the, the beginning of the sixth year, so it's not just...
Right.
It's right around there.
Percentage, okay.
It's in the middle of that paragraph in 2.2.
Okay.
Again, if you have suggestions as to modifications, now would be the time, so...
Do you want, I, I have some just simple drafting suggestions.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know if we wanted to get into that.
Not today, um, probably at this, in this forum, but, uh...
Yeah.
You know, as we move forward over the next week. I think it's important, um, I did ask the architect to come on site and meet with me so that we can sit down and reach some agreement. That architectural firm also happened... That architectural firm also happens to be, I believe, the one the city has retained the services of to possibly design, or at least preliminarily, design this space. So makes sense that we try to coordinate things with that firm.
Timing-wise, when would you like to have a clean version done to send over to the city?
I would hope we can get that done by the beginning of next week.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Super.
I would hope.
Super. We're still operating from the expectation that we want to have a document in place around Memorial Day, right?
Right. That's our hope.
Yeah.
That's our hope, yes.
And it would be, well, I'd love to see your suggestions, Aaron, and then, nice to see a clean, you know, version, read through it before, without all the changes and stuff before it would be sent over to the city.
Yeah. I do like the concept of, obviously, when it comes to the sharing cost of a percentage-
Yes.
-as opposed to a dollar amount.
Yes.
I mean, we know the technology changes, particularly when it comes to security.
Mm-hmm.
AI, the advances of artificial intelligence, the use of security, we're talking about 53 years.
Mm-hmm.
And putting individuals in place as opposed to AI and the technology in place, I mean, it's going to be a next generation. We just have to look at what the costs are and talk about the proportionality of that.
And increasing, you know, with union raises, increasing deputy court-
Well, what I'm saying, it's less, it's more likely we have fewer deputies working there and more-
Good point.
AI approaches, which is like in the, in the security industry, that's, that's the project, that's projected quite a bit. We have more, less human interfaces, so you don't deal with unions.
It freaks me out.
As far as I know, in AI.
It freaks me out.
Maybe, maybe that's a new field for the attorneys.
You know, AI freaks me out, so.
No, but yeah, I think this is, I think, I think this is-
There you go, it does.
I think this is very close to going, being ready to go back to them, and I just don't want to hold things up. I want to get, obviously, something that they can take action on, but I don't-
Do you have a significant point that you wanted to bring up today, that, that there's a change to this?
No. Like I said, they were all, they were all, like, very minor drafting things that would be boring, you know, defined terms, things that aren't defined, maybe becoming defined terms that would clean things up, so.
Yeah, very, definitely some language-
It's a very good draft, it's been worked on by a lot of people, and those things happen, that's all.
And there's, there's some components of commercial lease in there that we, I've talked to our Prosecutor's Office about deleting.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know where those originated from.
Article 7 was one.
Yeah, well, Article 7 specifically was, there's no applicability to, to us as an entity in Article 7, so.
Yeah.
So I will contact, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just asking Steve if you have anything you want to do.
No, no. No, let's, like the plan.
I will contact the Mr. Lyons today and try to set up a meeting.
Thank you.
I think one of the key issues is going to be the exhibits also, so I'll endeavor to get the architect on site to try to crank something out to go along with another draft of the lease.
That'd be great.
That would be awesome. I appreciate your work on this, Chris.
Can I segue a bit?
Of course.
Just to, we had our weekly construction meeting at the courthouse site, and I just wanted to make one note. From that meeting, it, you know, we had a $1.76 million owner allowance for change, owner requested changes, and things that happened based on fuel conditions, et cetera. That, as of yesterday, has mostly been exhausted. We have approximately two months remaining in that construction period. So I did talk to the construction manager yesterday and asked if there's potentially any big hit that could, could happen, that we would need to additionally absorb through some other supplemental budget. He's fairly confident that there's nothing huge coming in the near future, meaning the next several months. There are some additional dollars remaining in the construction manager contingency budget that, if unused at the end of the project, would go back to the county, return to the county. So there, there are some abilities to, to finagle some additional costs in there, and we're still waiting on some final estimates for flooring in the 1841 building, condition of the floor such that there's some work, supplemental work that needs to be done regarding underlayment and to, one, raise levels where necessary to meet other levels of flooring, and two, to prevent the squeaking that's associated with the historic building. So I think squeaks are kind of cool, but, anyway. But that's, that's a potential $50,000 cost.
As long as they're not AI squeaks.
So, but I just wanted to mention that while we're trying to close out the project, we're, we're pretty tight on the budget itself, so.
Okay, good.
Just so you're aware. That's all I had.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing the next version.
As do I. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so next up, we are going to talk about the July 4th holiday, which falls on a Tuesday. My suggestion, because of vacations and so forth, that, you know, Monday would be off the table, but then also moving it to Thursday to give our staff Wednesday after the holiday to get ready for the meeting, as they always do. They always have, normally have Monday for a Tuesday meeting-
Sure.
-to give them Wednesday, and have the meeting on Thursday would be my suggestion. What do you think, Rhonda?
As long as it doesn't affect anything with the auditor's office or their process.
Okay.
Let's check that out, but I-
So if the auditor's okay, Thursday's all right with everyone?
Makes sense to me, yep.
And then, and anybody who's taking a trip, it does give them Wednesday to, the extra day for a trip.
Sure.
You know, at the day after 4th, 4th of July. So if we can investigate if Thursday would be okay, that would be great.
Good.
Okay, Aaron, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Steve, do you have anything?
Yeah, one to bring up, I guess, we are going to try to do a meeting, ask Mike Lyons for an EMA agreement update as soon as possible.
Yeah.
I know Chris has had some conversations with him regarding the administrative of being able to make some tweaks and modify, and he's done some research on the, being able to pay bills and so forth without having the General Governance Board meeting. So I think if we can continue to work on that, that'd be good to get back to the communities for those that are in holding pattern.
And we're going to have a meeting Friday.
Right.
Verify, verify Mike's available, and then we'll probably notice that a special meeting for Friday.
Okay.
I also did want to bring up an issue. We had a resident, reflected on our minutes, who was alleging one of our employee was in effect pocketing $30 for the Dog and Kennel Fund. The information had been provided to him, and he was simply, I'll just say, kindly characterized as a misinterpreting of the numbers, misinterpreting as to where the money goes. When we were notified by mail, actually, I just want to thank Rhonda for quickly responding within nine minutes, had the answer back to him that the $30 he was paying were redemption fees, not fines. The fines would only be assessed to those who were cited in court. He was not, and so therefore was applicable, that line item. Unfortunately, the, even though he had, was given this information, decided to file a police report, and the police ended up doing, and I think it was a waste of police resources on this.
Sadly.
Simply, yeah, simply could have been, if he had just taken the time, read his email, or listened to and talked to our employees, been able to clear it up a lot quicker. So it's unfortunate, but I just want at least for the public to know that we have full confidence in Del Saffel and our employees over at the, over at the Dog, Dog Pound, they're doing a good job. They're not going to, we have oversight, we have the ability to make sure that everything is accounted for, and have full confidence, and I want to make sure that publicly, make sure that people know that they're honest, they're doing a good job, and, and it's just outrageous for-
Yes.
-a citizen to make those kind of unfounded allegations without doing a full-
And the police resources.
Conversation. Yes. So I just want to make sure they have my full confidence, and no, no doubts that, hopefully, that we'll hear from this gentleman again.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope, that's it.
Anybody else, do you have anything else? Come on up.
And to follow up on Commissioner Hamblin's comments, these are the pages documenting the $30 I'm paying for Mr. Frederick that I received from the dog warden. So clearly, there's a trail that all traces back, including the deposit that was made and credited to the Dog and Kennel Fund through the county auditor and the county treasurer, so. Yeah. But here it is, in case, you know, anybody wants to take a look at it. Two other notes. County auditor budget hearing has been scheduled for next Tuesday, I believe it's at 11:00 AM. I think that's the time, Rhonda, is that correct?
I believe so.
11:00 AM. So it's, I have not received the forms, the budget forms yet. I believe we gave him a pretty lengthy deadline to get those back. And I've also offered to meet with him in advance to answer any questions he may have about the numbers, the documents, or the process itself. So I've not yet heard from him, but perhaps this week. So I just wanted to remind you, we have that scheduled for next Tuesday. Also wanted to let you know, I met with County Prosecutor Thompson last week regarding expansion of state-mandated victim assistance procedures and policies, I guess. And he has determined that there's a chance, based on these changes, that he may require an additional staff person in his victim assistance unit. And as such, I've asked him to, if he was willing, to come to meet with the board, make a presentation about the state changes that are affecting his office and other offices at the local level, and what those budgetary needs might be associated with staff increase, so, possible staff increase. So he's agreed to make a presentation on May 2nd, and so he shall be here. I think I asked him to be around 10:30, and he said he would need about 10 minutes, so.
Great.
Just so you're aware. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I do want to mention, Andy Conrad has communicated with us about, wants to discuss that the $5 permissive increase for license tags and presenting to us his budgetary constraints and the cost of materials and so forth, and I think he, last time, heard he wants to come next week, so we'll have to include that in our discussion session.
Absolutely, Rhonda. If you include the county engineer for discussion, so that would be great. Anybody have anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll.
Hambley.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Sweattick.
Yes.